Counsel, if you will come to order, it is 7:00 PM. And we do have a quorum with everyone present. Just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an invocation by Fire Chief Carroll. And afterwards, I'll remain standing while we say the pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag. And Councilmember Jensen will lead us in that. Please stand.
Everybody, your heads with me, please. Lord, we just thank you for the evening that you've provided for us and the blessings that you've provided for us and all that's in this town. God would just ask that you provide safety to the firefighters and the police officers that are working tonight. Provide us guidance, Lord, for this council and your wisdom to all the staff members and council as we move forward on projects and on decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. Citizens' presentations is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So I think we have two people who signed up tonight. Are both of you speaking or just one? Both? All right. And so, Danella, did I say that right? You want to be first, please. Come to the podium, state your name and address, and then you can speak.
I'm together.
Yes, you sure may.
I'm not a public speaker, so I wrote down my thoughts. I hope you appreciate that.
So state your name and address, and then you have the...
Okay. Danella, Oregon, 2803 Waverly Drive.
And I'm Carrie Share. I'm at Six Hill Court.
I was formerly at Ten Hill Court. Let's see. I would like to propose that council change the town ordinance to disallow short-term rentals such as Airbnb. The influx of strangers into our little community is unnerving. We know nothing about these people, their purpose, or their background. They are complete strangers. These are not friends or invited guests by our neighbors, but again, strangers. We worry about our children playing in our yards because we don't know who is across the street. They bring zero value to our community, unless you count paying the appropriate hotel taxes, which I assume they are not. We aren't a tourist town, and we have more than enough hotel spaces. This business structure effectively allows the zoning of a hotel on any residential street, and I am adamantly against this practice.
And I just wanted to add that I'm... My main concern is that there are no background checks. There's no way for us to know if these are registered sex offenders that are coming into our town. So that's definitely a concern when we've got kiddos on the street and not being able to know whether or not, you know, they are there, who they are, and who they bring in when they rent as well. Because you know, when you rent a property, there's usually one person listed, and there's several people that come. So this is just opening up safety and security issues for our kids and our homes as well. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
No. Thank you very much for coming to council tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Holly, did we have anyone else sign up?
No, Mayor.
Anyone in the audience that want to address the council during this item? All right. Hearing none, we will move on. Under Announcements and Reports, Item 1, receive Town Manager Class's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding same: Community Pool, July 4 Celebration, and Staffing. Town Manager Class.
Good evening. I just want to give you an update on the community pool. As of today, we have 595 family, 114 individual memberships this year. We're also in the process of installing a new shade structure at the pool. It began last week. We should have it finished by the end of this week, which will be on the east end of the splash pad area. The July 4 celebration, preparation is ongoing, but it's all on track. Sherry's doing a really nice job with that. The actual setup will begin tomorrow. Signage and the orange fencing will go up by the end of the week. The large rented equipment should be arriving. It will be set up on Monday before the 4th. And then, as you know, on Tuesday, the 4th, we'll start at 7:15 with the 5K run, 9:30 with the Parade of Patriots. And then, the celebration of the fireworks will begin from 6:00, last through about 10 o'clock on the 4th. With regard to some staffing issues, as I'm sure that you're aware, we filled the Parks and Recreation Director vacancy with Tony Hara Mio. So Tony's here tonight with us. Tony's been with the town for 12 years, and I couldn't be more pleased with the opportunity to promote him into this position. I believe, I'm very confident he's going to do a great job for us. We've also filled the Recreation Superintendent vacancy with Nathan Blaze, who will be coming to us from Atlanta, Georgia. He'll arrive on July 10 to start. We've also filled the Human Resources Manager vacancy with James Edwards, 12-year veteran of North Richland Hills. And he also will be joining us on July 10 to begin. And then, we have advertised the Park Superintendent vacancy last week. That should run for two weeks. And we're getting an exceptional response to that posting right now, and I'm very confident we'll be able to bring a great candidate onboard. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any questions on those items?
Yeah, I have a question. The shade structure across the road on the park, do you know when that's going to be put in? Immediately, right after the shade...
Same group doing it.
Okay.
Good. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, anybody wish to remove any of the items 2 through 5? Hearing none, I then would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 5.
I move to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 5.
Second. I have Mayor Protem Rowe making the motion to approve the consent agenda with a second by Councilman Kurtz. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Recognition of the Police Department for their contribution to the Town of Trophy Club being ranked number one as being the safest city in Texas for 2017, according to SafeWise. So at this time, I'm going to ask Chief Arad if he would come up to the front.
Also, I believe Kelly Darling and Tiffany Niffius... No, I'm sorry. That's going to be the next one. Yes, my bad.
So I have a plaque that comes from SafeWise, is proud to present this award to the City of Trophy Club. Well, close, anyway, but we'll take it. For their efforts in the community safety and crime prevention, Trophy Club was ranked the first safest city in Texas due to the commitment to the safety and security of its residents. And so, here is a reprint of that certificate. So let me present that. And Town Manager Class, would you also come up? So let me present this to you. Congratulations, sir. And your officers for the job well done. All right. Good. So you want the officers that are here to come up?
Yeah, please.
Come on up. Because I believe you all have a lot to do here, right? You're the safest, right? Okay. So somehow, bounce out a little bit. One more. All right. Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
I was behind him, eh? He's wide enough to block me out.
All right. Item number 7. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the Town Council, designating July as Park and Recreation Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. At this time, I would recognize as Mayor Protem to read the proclamation and make a motion.
Yes, sir. And after I read this proclamation, I'm going to have to leave for a minute because I just realized that I have my wife's car keys in my pocket, and she's at a friend's house with a four-year-old and a two-year-old. So I'm going to read this really fast, and then I'm going to bounce out of here for about 10 minutes. "Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas Designating July 2017 as Park and Recreation Month in Trophy Club and Providing an Effective Date. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the Town of Trophy Club, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas the Town of Trophy Club recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by the Town of Trophy Club Town Council that July 2017 is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Trophy Club, Texas, passed and approved by the Town Council of Trophy Club of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this, the 27th day of June 2017."
So I'd entertain a motion to approve proclamation 2017-06.
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Mayor Protem Rowe and seconded by Kurtz. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. At this time, I'd like to ask Kelly Darling and Tiffany Niffius to come forward, and I'll present you the proclamation. Kelly Darling is Recreation Coordinator. Tiffany is Park and Recs Chairman. Right? Board President, Chairman. All right. So you want to turn around to the camera, and we'll present. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And it's good to have it this month because in a few days will be your busiest day of the year, right? Okay. And if you survive those two days of the third and fourth, you may. Item number 8. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the acceptance of the Popular Annual Financial Report, better known as the PAFR, for fiscal year 2016. You've got a copy of that at your dais. There are copies available if citizens would like a copy of that that outlines the financial reporting and the audit that the town has gone through. So if you'd like a copy of that, just request one, and we'd be happy to provide you one. Staff, did anybody have a comment about this? No? No? Okay. Yes, John?
This is our third year submitting the PAFR. And so, the last two years, we've actually received the award for the Popular Annual Financial Report, so we're hoping to have this third year. I believe this is a good move towards transparency by explaining parts of the audit because that is a document that very few even accountants like to use. So this luckily explains a lot of it and also features a lot of items in our town that might not be known to our businesses and anyone staying at our hotels.
Thank you, John. Counsel, any questions? All right. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Popular Annual Financial Report for year 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the PAFR.
Second.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Kurtz made the motion, and Jensen seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. And recognizing that Mayor Protem Rowe had to leave for a few minutes. Counsel, I've had a request from several people to take item 12 and move it up in the agenda, and had thought this might be a time that we do so. They were requesting because there were citizens here to speak on that matter, and it makes them not have to stay here so long.
I have a attorney question. I'd like to... How do I make a motion to stay in the order that we're in?
Call of order? You can just... You can say point of order, but it is... The decision of the body. So there's no way to really vote on that. So you can express your opinion that you don't wish to move it. You want it to stay where it is.
I wish it stays where it is.
Yeah, I agree. With Ryland absent, that's a little premature.
Oh, because Ryland's gone?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we will wait and consider it in its order, then. All right. Item number 9. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the Texas Municipal Retirement System Consumer Price Index Adjustment for calendar year 2018. Do we have staff comments on this?
Yes, sir. Our current calendar year retirement plan provisions provided annuity increase of 30% for the Consumer Price Index, and this has been the same rate since the adoption of ordinance 2014-40, which had an effective date of January 1, 2015. This particular ordinance declared the CPI annual rate of adjustment to stand on a repeating basis at 30%, and that's what we recommend for the budget year 2018.
All right. And so... Let's see here. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to either take the recommendation of 30% of CPI, which is what we're at currently, or something different. Anybody wishing to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the 30% CPI.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion by Councilmember Lamont, and a second by Councilperson Fleury. Any discussion? Yes?
Question. According to the motion we made, do we have to bring this up every year? Once we made that decision, can we just leave it as is? Or are we required to bring it back every year for a vote?
I'm not sure of the requirements. Holly might be able to better speak to that, but my recommendation is to bring it back, maybe just on consent. That way, it's at least... It's in our budget. It's, you know, at least you're looking at it, and if there's any changes, you can direct us in that way. Would that be agreeable to you, or...
Any objection to taking that recommendation to just put it on consent each year? No objection to that? All right. So Tom, if you want to take that action for future years. All right. The matter is properly before us. Any questions about this, counsel? All right. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right. Item number 10. Receive an update and provide direction to town staff regarding entryway monumentation and median landscaping for the Town of Trophy Club. We formed a subcommittee to look at this some months ago, and tonight is a chance to kind of hear the update of that report and where we are, and for you to see the draft, RFP. John, were you going to make some comments about this?
Yes. Good evening, counsel. I want to apologize, first off. I was going to try to get this RFP to you guys in the month of May, and that was my ultimate goal. With budgeting time hitting us and us spending a lot more time developing the document earlier, or it just took up so much of my time that I didn't get it to you guys in the timeframe I stated. But attached to the agenda is the RFP without any of the information or with only the information that you requested us to go out for. All right. So it's just asking for design and cost of construction of implementation of entryway monumentation only. So the subcommittee basically gave us the direction, narrow the scope. We only want to look at entryway monumentation. Wave mining signage will be done on its own end, so that'll be done along with park signage, and the master median landscape plan is actually going to be taken in by the Parks Department. And that's a project that will be taken on next year. So this attached RFP is just for that specific area. It is just language cut down from the original RFP that we did. We had sent it out to all the same people that applied the last time. I mean, also advertised it as well. It's my preference, if we can hold off on doing this till August, I can spend a little bit more time doing this, put more time into advertising it and getting it out to the right people so that we get a number of applicants, as that the subcommittee asked for.
All right. So the committee's recommendation was to just focus on entryway.
Yes, sir.
At this point. All right. And so, as a note for counsel, the subcommittee had Councilmember Reed on that subcommittee previously, and so we're not agenda to take that specific action tonight, but we'll add that to future agenda so that we can fill the subcommittee at our next meeting. So I'll bring that up again when we get to future agenda items. So anybody else on the subcommittee want to comment about matters?
Well, I'm the only one on this. I mean, John gave a good description of kind of where we're at. It sort of got derailed early on. Well, actually, I think it came before council, before the subcommittee was created. We received a bid from a group, and I think we rejected that bid, and then we formed the subcommittee. And since that time, we've sent Parks and Rec the signage, and they've sent it back to us. And so, as far as the park signs, so we have that nailed down. And I think that they're... We're working on medians and things like that. And then, entryways was sort of going to stand on its own. We wanted to send out an RFP just for entryways, I think. And so, that's kind of where it's at. And it'll give council... It'll give the committee some time to look at that RFP because this is the first time that we've seen it. And so, it'll give us some time to go over it with staff, and then we can bring that back to council, and you can look at it, and we can send that out.
All right. So for our new council members, some years ago, when we began this discussion, we looked at a couple of pieces of property for entryway monumentation. One of them is at Trophy Lake Drive, and you have in your packet some pictures of some land. It's where there's one of the garrison flags and a building. The building used to have electrical equipment for cell tower in it, and there used to be a cell tower in the flagpole. That no longer exists. The town owns that land, so the town has some capabilities to do something there. The other potential site is a corner, and you have some pictures in your packet about that. It is the corner of land at Trophy Club Drive at 114 Service Road. Both Meet You Anywhere and 7-Eleven own a piece of that. So that stone wall actually would be cut in half by the two property owners. I don't think we have to show it necessarily unless people want to see it. People and the citizens want to see it, or no? So I took picture... We took pictures of it so that you had an idea of what we're talking about there. Several years ago, we talked to the owners of Meet You Anywhere about potentially donating or letting us buy that land. At that time, they were trying to negotiate with 7-Eleven to get that land along with some land behind that slip road that they wanted to put some outdoor picnic tables to expand their restaurant. And at this point, they still haven't gotten 7-Eleven to negotiate. They thought it was easier if they could acquire it, and then we could acquire from them a piece of that, as opposed to us having to acquire a piece from both. If you look at that stone wall, it has no lighting. It has no water to it. Used to be vegetation planted there, and you went through a couple of droughts, and all the vegetation died, so it got pulled out. It was monumentation placed there by the villas of Trophy Club, and so it was part of that PD years ago. But there's some beautiful oak trees in front of it, and it is a site that if you want to do some monumentation to consider. And if we're going to try to do that, I think somehow we've got to pursue that fact, if you think that's the location for monumentation, to acquire the land or require... Acquire permission to use it. So that's the reason I included those pictures in the packet, so we could have everybody up to date on it.
But it goes further than just those two locations. We were also looking at Trophy Wood and Bobcat area.
Yes. Right. Yeah. Trophy Wood is a little different because you now have landowners on both corners, so you're limited maybe to median in that particular case. And Bobcat, you've got a couple of locations. One could be close to some land that's owned by the town where their water tower is, and the other is the little triangular piece of land between Bobcat and Marshall Creek Road that is owned by the school district. And the school district is willing to donate the land if we would take it over and take care of it. Any questions about this? So we'll add to future agenda that we'll make an appointment of another person to that subcommittee, and then we'll be looking... You'll be back to us in August about the RFP, John?
Yes, sir.
All right. And as the RFP gone out, I apologize that...
No, not at this time. I'd actually like some time to actually work with the subcommittee on the particulars of that. They give some direction of some specific artwork they might want included, or golf, or some specific things that are very particular to the Town of Trophy Club to be included in that. So it might even narrow down what people submit back to us and better hone what that the entryway monumentation might look like. So it'd be good... Also, whenever the committee meets, they need to set times that they can meet to review the packets when they come in. And so, if they want to do interviews afterwards, there's actually places in the RFP where we can set up interview times. And so, they need to basically coordinate their schedules with us so that we make sure that we can accommodate that.
All right. Good. All right. So item... No other questions?
Nope.
All right. Item number 11. Receive an update and provide direction to town staff regarding Trophy Club park debris removal. So we have a staff report on this and some recommendations.
Yes, we do. As counsel recalls, in December 2016, y'all approved a contract not to exceed $81,475 with Ceres for the debris removal. As of early this morning, staff was ready to move forward with the debris removal and had it scheduled for next week. We were able to contract with Ceres for a price of $52,398.60. So we came in well under budget with that. Later this afternoon, we received an email from the State Assistant Recovery Officer who's helping us with the contract with Ceres and with FEMA. And they've asked us to hold an abeyance, the debris removal at this point. It's based upon a FEMA decision as it relates to the Corps of Engineer lease. Doesn't particularly impact the town. It's between FEMA and the Corps in the leasing of the land. But essentially, the issue at hand now is there's a legal opinion that FEMA is working through, essentially saying they're questioning whether one federal agency can actually pay another federal agency for disaster relief. An issue out of our hands. We're just sort of caught in the middle of it because we hold the lease. So they've asked us to hold an abeyance, any removal of debris at this point while they resolve this issue between two federal agencies. So as of this morning, we thought we were going to be moving ahead with it this afternoon. It's clear that we can't do that yet. But we are prepared to move ahead once we're given the go-ahead.
All right. So I think... Yes?
Greg? Do we have the funds already?
Yes. FEMA's already provided us with the funds. They're just asking us not to spend those funds yet pending this legal decision.
Now, those funds, are they strictly for debris removal? Does that include replacing, repairing, other items?
The funds that we have right at this point are just for the debris removal. The replacing and repairing is a second FEMA grant that has not been executed yet.
Can't imagine why anybody wants to work for the federal government.
So at this point, I don't know why we're necessarily providing direction. If you've got the grant, and the grant was written appropriately to do the work, it seems like you would be moving forward. Is it here because it's the money expenditure being greater than what we require council approval?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess when this comes back on the packet, let's agenda it so that it's... Take appropriate action so we can approve it as opposed to provide direction, which is a little vague, but... And let me just ask the question. If it comes back and it satisfies the requirement, counsel, are you okay with it being on consent agenda as opposed to taking separate action on this particular item? Anybody object to that? Okay. So I guess when this comes back on the packet, let's, let's agenda it so that it's, take appropriate action so we can approve it as opposed to provide direction, which is a little vague. But, and let me just ask the question. If it comes back and it satisfies the requirement, council, are you okay with it being on consent agenda as opposed to taking separate action on this particular item? Anybody object to that?
Not here.
No. Nobody? All right. Tom? So that may be a way to streamline it a little bit in the future. All right.
Thank you.
Item number 12. Consider take appropriate action regarding the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. Proposal to enter into an agreement with the town of Trophy Club to transfer ownership of fire station, fire station land and equipment to the town. And so this item was something that...
I object to the consideration of the question.
And object to consideration has to be, if you look at Robert's Rules of Order, something that you think would damage the body by discussing it all.
That's correct, sir.
And so therefore, I rule your objection to out of order.
Point of order. Our rules of procedure say that you can object to the consideration of the question on any agenda item. And the officer will immediately call the question. It doesn't require a second and it requires a two-third majority vote. That's under our rules.
Well, it also says in our rules that we'll follow parliamentary procedures. So which takes precedent?
Parliamentary procedure says a second's not required and the officer must call the vote. That's what Robert's Rule of Order requires.
If you will turn to Robert's Order and read an objection to consideration, what are the terms for an objection to consideration?
Well, it's, okay, I'll, I'll make this simple. I'll object to the chair's ruling.
All right. Then we'll challenge the chair. I'll turn the chair over to Mayor Potem for the vote to see if the challenge is upheld or not.
Okay, I'll call for the vote on the challenge of the chair's ruling that Mr. Jensen's motion objecting to the consideration of the question is out of order. All in favor of the chair's ruling?
Can we get a legal opinion on that?
Say this, if you've adopted Robert's Rules of Order and you've adopted specific rules, general rules and the conflict of rules like that would be the most specific one applies.
Is that what you wanted, Greg?
Morse, you were asking on the conflict, I think, but I'm backing up a little bit.
So my understanding, and it's been a while since I've read cover to cover our rules of procedure, David, but my understanding, well, I was in labor last time I did it and it's things you do when you're bored, is that we, we have some specifics and where those specifics are not listed, we fall back on Robert's Rules. Is that correct?
Correct. It's similar to like when you adopt an international code or something or other things. You adopt it with these amendments.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't looked at it specifically, but if it says we dropped Robert's Rules of Order, then you have specific, other specific rules y'all have adopted as a council that conflict with that. You would go with the more specific one adopted by the council, I would say.
So a vote, a vote yes is to accept our rules of procedure?
No, it's to uphold the chair's ruling.
A vote yes is to uphold the mayor's ruling that you're going to go through Robert, you're going to follow Robert's Rules of Order on this and that it has to have a reason as he stated before.
A, a yes vote would be to, a yes vote would be in favor of the mayor's contention that Robert's Rules supersede. And a no vote would be in favor of Philip's contention that the, our, the council's rules of procedure would supersede.
That's really not my objection. My objection is...
Well, that's what you stated, so.
Well, I didn't say, let me state why. I believe that an objection to consideration...
I called the vote.
You can't...
Ryland has the...
Well, I did. I did call for the vote earlier, so.
He recognized. He did give the mayor the floor. Did you ask him a question?
Or no, I was stating my, my understanding of, of the situation.
The question before you right now is if you believe Robert's Rules of Orders, Councilman Schaffner challenged the mayor's ruling on the, the Robert's Rules of Orders controls. If you believe that, you vote yes. If you believe the specific one adopted by council controls, then that would be a no vote on this.
Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All those in, all those in, in favor, supporting the chair's ruling, raise your hand. All those oppose? And so six to one with Sanders opposing. The rule of the chair is overruled. In that case, then the motion would stand. I'll yield the chair back to Mayor Sanders.
All right. So I'll call for the vote. The motion is to object to consideration of this matter. And did we get a second?
It doesn't require, requires two thirds.
All right. So it requires two third vote. Anybody need any information? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to object to consideration, show your hands. All oppose, same sign. Sanders and Flor against, it does carry with the two thirds. So the matter is then...
I believe five is what it would take, right?
Five, two, so you were at it. Yeah. Okay. So the matter will not be considered and we will move on to item 13.
Did we get a formal letter on this to even talk about it from the, from the...
Well, you voted.
We've moved on to item 13.
So we can't have any discussion on it?
You've already, the item's already been closed. Move on. Answer your question. Yes, you got an email. All right. Item 13. Refer to agenda item. Consider take appropriate action regarding appointing the mayor and two council members to the appointments committee. Rowe and Kurtz served previously. And so at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint two people to the appointments committee.
So I'll, I'll make a comment real quick before anybody wants to make a motion, Mayor, just because I was the one that asked that we move this to this meeting just because Eric wasn't present last time. As you stated, Tim and I, along with yourself, served on this committee. The committee was set up two years ago to have two council members and the mayor. And what we do is we interview, we, we review applications for boards and commissions and we choose which ones to interview and then we schedule and set up interviews. I wanted to give an opportunity for the whole council to be here to see if, along with the mayor, if any of the other four of you guys, Alicia, Eric, Greg or Philip, had interest in serving since Tim and I had done it basically since we created it. So I don't know if anyone has a proposal, a motion they'd like to make to nominate someone, but that was my intention. Cause I've, I don't mind doing it, but it, it does take a little bit of time. And, you know, I'd kind of like to see, kind of like to see someone else pick it up at least for one year for me personally.
Yeah, I'm fine either way. I can be on it. I have the time. But I'm more than happy to pass it along if someone else wants to.
I just like the continuity of the appointments. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Sanders, Ryland Rowe and Tim Kurtz to the committee.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Lamont, a second by Councilmember Jensen. Further discussion and it's to appoint the same members of Rowe and Kurtz and Sanders to the committee.
I'd, I'd really like to know if Ryland wants to be on it. I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to force somebody to be on something if, if they don't, if, I mean, it does take a lot of time.
Yeah, I don't mind. I just wanted to give other folks an opportunity.
What are you doing?
But we don't sound like we have anybody jumping up and down.
I'll do it if you don't, if you don't want to, I'd be happy to fill your role.
Well, then I'll amend the motion to nominate Mayor Sanders, Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Kurtz to serve on the appointments committee.
Second.
So I have a motion to amend by Councilmember Rowe, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. No, I mean, Schaffner. Sorry.
With two Fs.
Jensen was nominated.
Two Ls.
That that's nominating Sanders, Jensen and Kurtz to the subcommittee. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All oppose, same sign. It is unanimous. Town council, future agenda item number three. Consider take appropriate action regarding land that A, the town owns for the possibility of residents to acquire the land and B, is maintained by the town but not owned. Councilmember Lamont and Schaffner place this item on your agenda. So you have some items in your agenda packet, page 96, 97 and 98 that outline it. Staff, any comments about this? Tom?
As the document indicates, we currently have in, in town eight common areas that the town maintains, our parks department maintains for either town-owned property or town-owned property subject to the sale or transfer to citizens. Of those eight pieces of property, five of the common areas are maintained by our parks. Staff currently, three are maintained by contractors that the town employs. The document lists all of the eight pieces of property with actually a comment section, as you can see. And we can go through each one of these if you like. But essentially, we went and looked at all of these properties. We went back through any documents that we might have or any recollections collectively by staff as to how we got to the point where we were maintaining property that the town didn't own or property that we owned but could be potentially given to property owners or sold to property owners. Essentially, Tony can go through each one of these properties if, if you choose to want to do that. We did a cost analysis, just very rudimentary on this. And the cost analysis indicated to us that the five common areas that we're currently maintaining on property that the town does not own, when you look at the man hours per year and the annual cycles that we use to maintain the property, we would estimate that that's costing the town about $66,420. And when you look at the three other pieces of property that we are maintaining through the use of contractors, when you add the two totals up, it would appear to us that we're spending about $70,125 to maintain these eight pieces of property. And again, if you'd like to go through each one, Tony will be happy to walk you through the properties and exactly what it is that we're doing to maintain those.
Yeah. I'll start it out with, let's start out with the church by the roundabout because that's, that's where we're maintaining easement, I guess, is that little strip. Okay. So I want to know the difference. I, I, I agree with staff that, that it shouldn't be our responsibility. But that being said, I think that we probably maintain Trophy Wood behind the Hampton Inn because I see a little swath of land that is mowed. We probably are doing PD-30 because I see a little swath of land that is mowed and a different height on the PD-30. So are there other, are there other areas like the church that we're also maintaining that are not our pieces of property that you know of? And are we maintaining those properties that I mentioned?
The only, the only areas that I'm more aware of is the three walls that we discussed approximately about a year ago when the Highlands' properties were turned over to the town. And through my records, the reason I didn't include them in here was because they were deeded over to the town. But to my recollection, those are the only areas that...
So you don't think that we're doing PD-30 and the Trophy Wood area, well, that you know of?
That, that I know of. Yes, correct.
Can you check on those? Because it is odd that, because I, I went specifically today to look because I always thought that we maintain and it's a different height. So it's mowed like the medians, like the others, and then the grass goes up. Same thing on PD-30. So I assume that somebody's mowing it. And if you can just check on, on that because my contention is that we probably shouldn't be doing that. We don't mow, where do you live? Six Avalon, Seven Avalon? We don't, we don't mow your little strip. We don't mow Nick's or Ryland's or anybody in town. And so I certainly would give, on that piece of property with the church, I would, I would at least tell them that that's theirs to maintain. No different than we require anybody in, in town to maintain.
I'm sure when the roundabout was built that they had to allow some additional right-of-way to be granted there. And so there was probably a...
No, we, we bought it.
Oh, we did? We paid for it? Okay. So we, but we didn't pay for the parcel. We paid for the right-of-way.
No, no, we paid for a piece to make it bigger.
Oh, you mean where the street is. Right, right, right. Well, of course. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. Yeah. So, but at the end of the day, there's someone's, someone's wires got crossed there in terms of thinking that there was a portion that we own that we don't obviously there. So, yeah. I think you're, I agree with you there, Philip.
And then one other area that you may want to check on too, which I always thought we maintained, and I think the last time we were discussing this, was Indian Creek on the other side of the wooden fence where they have no access. So where the treehouse, our lovely treehouse is standing on the other side of that fence, I think we also maintain that. But again, I don't know. You know, that's, that's one to check on. You know, my, my contention has always been that if we don't own the land, I don't think that we should be maintaining the land. I have no problem maintaining, the last time we were in this position, we did not have the letter that we now have with the cemetery. That wasn't a council action. It looks like it was a arbitrary town manager, streets person that made that decision. I, I like what we do there, but I would rather approach the cemetery and say, here's what we're going to do in the future. We will buy that piece of property for a dollar and turn it over to the town and we will continue to maintain it. If you want it, if you want to maintain it, we're going to turn it back over to you. That's, that's my contention on that. I think that they would turn that over to us because we do a much better job of maintaining that property than they do their property. And so, so that's sort of my, that's sort of my direction that I would give staff. Any of these properties, I think that you need to approach whoever it is and we need to, to take ownership of that property if we're going to maintain that property.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rowe?
I, I, I don't see anything that we're doing that I'm uncomfortable saying, oh, you know, that's a burden we shouldn't be taking on. It's all like, like looking at this, it's all neighborhood monument stuff, right? You know, neighborhood common areas or whatever. And then you go down the list and that's pretty much what it is. I think, so ideally, like what Councilman Schaffner said, I would just, I would encourage that we just go through the process of cleaning up whose, whose name is on the property and if we need to, and if something was like, the Eagles Ridge thing is a perfect example. I mean, the mistake was made there. When that was platted, they should have, they should have carved out that neighborhood monument to be the same as, the same owner as the stuff in front of it there by the little stone wall, right? So if we need to, if we have to pony up and, and get a survey done to get that done, I'm okay with that because I think my goal is just to see it cleaned up. That way down the road, we, we come and go, staff comes and goes. People know what's ours and what's our responsibility.
And I think the only one that I would have a problem with is the 114. I don't think that, that's on there. I'm not sure why we maintain that. Is, is there a reason that we maintain that parcel? Do we have to have access to something?
Talking about the burms or...
No, no, the, can you move that to, there's one on 114. Somebody, anybody?
Page 106?
That right there. It, it, it appears to be that gentleman's parcel.
Oh, that's Sonora. Correct. Sonora Drive.
So we don't have to have access to anything and...
No, sir.
And that's his property? That y'all verified that?
Yes. Yes, that's through GIS and previous management has always told staff that it's, it was town property, so.
Yeah, you, you, you may get with him and tell him that, that he has a nice big piece of property he can maintain.
Which one is that in the list? Is that...
It's listed as Sonora Drive.
Sonora?
Yeah.
Above the gas well.
Right.
Page two.
And it's owned by an individual.
Can I recommend that every couple of months, we get an update on how this is going so it doesn't fall by the wayside again?
All right. So what I've heard are some recommendations. Does anybody want to take a stab at an actual motion of any of this?
Well, before we do that, do, do we have a copy of the Community Improvement Association Agreement? You say there's an agreement here which necessitates that it be maintained by the town. Are there any other properties in this agreement? In that agreement?
No, sir. I'm not, that I'm aware of. I don't have, I don't know where, I don't have a copy.
Do we have a copy of the agreement?
For the CIA?
All of the CIA records were turned over to the town when it was dissolved. Whether or not we know where they are, I don't know.
If one exists, we can find it. We will find it.
And before we attempt a motion, the land, Nick, that you were talking about, that the school owns on... And before we attempt a motion, the land, Nick, that you were talking about, that the school owns on Bobcat. Should, should we also include that to pursue and go ahead and, I think you said that they're willing to, to give that to the town?
Yeah, they've been approached before and say they're willing to do something about it. Currently, they maintain it, we do not. If you're going to do monumentation, you have to decide, do you think you're going to use that piece of land? If you are, then you probably should pursue trying to get something settled about it. Because it will, it will take some time to get that accomplished just through the school district.
Yeah. I, I, you know, quite honestly, even if we don't put monumentation, that's a nice corner to, it's an entrance to the town, you know. I, I wouldn't mind we taking control of that and at least cleaning that up, making it look nice. That's, that would be my recommendation. I, I think that the, you know, it, it can be, it can truly be said that the, the areas that we control or that we maintain, we do a great job. I mean, the, the cemetery looks great. It's a great entrance into the cemetery, so they should be very proud of what we've done. And even over in Rollins' neighborhood, Eagles Ridge, that's, that's very nice. The woods, you know, the entrance to the woods, it's, it's a very nice area, so I think it would be nice to have that control.
Rollin, you had your.
Oh, yeah, just to be specific, be specific here, Philip, you're talking about the little triangle of land that is south of Bobcat? Between Bobcat and Marshall Creek Boulevard?
Correct.
There, yeah. I haven't been over there in a couple of days, but as of Saturday, all of the school's property was nicely mowed and that triangle had about eighteen inches of weeds on it, so.
So it would be nice to maintain, it would be nice to.
I think they're, I think that shows their pun, their pun, Aaron Punt team right now saying, hey, come get it.
Come, come take control.
If I may add also.
Take that away and add the.
Just for the record, that triangle, it would be pretty easy to tie into the irrigation system in those medians and there as well. They're all sleeved, so they do cross the other side.
All right, so are, is the suggestion to things like, excuse me, Fox Point Eagle Ridge? To try to acquire a piece of property? Is that what the suggestion is?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
I, I think that we, I think the suggestion would be we acquire the property or if the current owner does not wish to, you know, deed that over to the town, then they can take over control and maintenance of that piece of property. And I think the woods is going to be individual homeowners, you know.
If it's maintained under an agreement, do you want us to pursue terminating the agreement?
The only agreement that I saw was the cemetery and it was a war.
CIA. CIA one that you're asking.
Well, I bet we couldn't, nobody could find that agreement, is that's what the mayor or.
And there's no, there's no, there's no party left to terminate it with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that we can find, unless we can find that agreement.
But are we deferring it back to a non-existent entity?
Well, I think in, I think in that case, anything that is pertaining to the CIA, and there are, there are still a few parcels floating out there that if you go look at Denton County Appraisal District, it has a CIA listed as the owner. I think on those, we would, we would, we would get with the county and convey that, demonstrate in some way that that has folded and we are now the subsequent party to that.
Put us on the ownership.
Yeah.
So in a long Trophy Club drive there at the woods area. When there was the water leak that happened and they had to rebuild the wall, seems like there was some discussion by the mud as to where the property line was. I don't remember how that.
They, they did not do a survey, they just decided to pay to rebuild the wall.
But didn't they determine the property line was somewhere in that vicinity of the wall? They just didn't have it re-surveyed?
Well, it was, the board was sort of split on it, but I think there were some on the board that thought the wall belonged to the homeowner. And if you look at, if you look at the plat, it looks like that wall belongs to the homeowner. And, and for the record, I don't want anything to do with the wall ownership. All I want is the land that we maintain, we don't maintain that wall.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, is if their property line stops at the wall somewhere, then that land is ours?
No, the property, the property stops at the street. There's no, there's no distinction between the property and the, and.
I wonder why they were having the debate about where the property line was?
Well, I think it was because their line was under it and they were either going to have to make that homeowner pay for it or they were going to pay for it. But it clearly says in the plat that, that the homeowner was responsible. There's, there's no dedication or anything in that plat.
And so for Meadowland Cemetery, your suggestion is to try to contact that association about purchasing that land?
Correct.
Also? And?
I, I think that we have more than paid for the field dirt that we took out of there.
So what about the Lakes Trail area? Is that?
I, I think that that belongs to the town, it's just not been changed in Denton County if you, if they do more research on that.
All right.
According to Councilmember.
And the Gaswell site?
I think those are the homeowners that want to buy it.
The, the issue with the Gaswell sites is you have two homeowners that would like to, they've approached us about purchasing those from the town. The issue is the wall that exists on the Gaswell site is about between ten and fifteen feet inside the property line. So the owner of the Gaswell, Beck Ventures, owns that ten or fifteen feet. And so we talked to the homeowners that they would have to actually first get an agreement with Beck to allow them to put their fences up through his fifteen feet. And then potentially then we would be able to sell them that, that piece of property. The other issue is we've got an ordinance that says that anything less than twenty feet, you can't put parallel fences up on. So that will probably preclude that from being able to happen. So it doesn't appear to me that there's going to probably be a solution whereby we can let that land go.
So, so you're saying that they would have to put a fence where on?
To make, to make that work, they would have to get Beck Ventures to allow them to put a fence all the way up to the well site wall, which would be about fifteen feet onto their Beck's property. Otherwise, there's about a fifteen-foot section that if we allowed them to take over our property and they put a fence up, the fence would not be in, in code because it would be an area less than twenty feet.
But, but they potentially could go to ZBA and get a ruling from ZBA, correct?
Yes, they could, they could attempt to do that, yes.
But that fifteen feet is just, it's an extension of, there's an existing fence, right? That runs down the middle, you're talking about the middle, the middle fence, right?
There is no middle fence, there's the, there's the wall to the well site. That's about fifteen feet inside the Beck property. So you have that fifteen feet of land that is Beck property that if we conveyed the property over to the homeowners, there would still be this fifteen-foot area that we wouldn't be able to deal with.
That's their fence.
That's their fence, right.
Yeah, and there's nothing here. Now who maintains the Beck property, the fifteen feet? Do we do it because it's just?
No, Beck maintains his fifteen feet and we just maintain everything up to that.
Right, there's the green area that we own.
So. Are y'all, you have more questions?
No.
Along those same lines, if you go over by the dog park on Milson's Point, there is some land behind those houses in that cul-de-sac that, that we maintain. And can you, can we also look at that to see if, if perhaps we can sell those, that land to those two homeowners up into, I think, the tree area, there's a tree line area. So it's just a small area that we have to maintain, yeah.
Absolutely, I have talked to one of the residents there and he, there is one that is interested.
Right, right. Yeah, I think I talked to the same gentleman. Okay. Where is that located? Milson's Point, cul-de-sac, Tony, Tony knows. It's, it's another area that's, that, if you go to the east, back behind all those houses, that's the homeowners association. And somehow we've got this little bitty area and it grows pretty high. And I think you have to, right now you're just going based on complaints, you know. But that would probably be, that would probably be good, a good area to turn over to homeowners or instead of having to maintain that.
All right.
Maybe, maybe the best thing to hear, sorry, Nick, maybe the best thing to do here would be for staff to work up a proposed course of action for each of these. And then if there are further questions for council, maybe council could appoint a subcommittee to work through it since it's highly detailed. Just, I, I think, what, I feel like we're kind of all on the same page about mainly just wanting to do some cleanup. But there's so much minutiae here, I don't know if we want to drag it through a bunch of meeting, a bunch of actual council meetings to, to get it to end of job, so.
Tom, do you feel comfortable trying to put together something of what you thought is the plan of action for all of this?
I do.
All right. And then maybe just, if there's not an objection, distribute that via email to council and if council has a comment, then you can comment back to them.
Okay.
All right, is that agreeable with everybody? Anybody object? All right. Town Council Future Agenda, item number four, consider to take appropriate action regarding memorandum of understanding relating to the joint regional local governments consisting of the Town of Trophy Club, Town of Westlake, and City of Roanoke. I placed this on the agenda so you would have a chance to look at what was agreed upon by a previous council with the other two entities. It's relatively vague, in my opinion. It, it was just a way to state we're going to try to work together. It was originally done because of a couple of reasons. One of those was the 170 bridge and how that might look and how it might be either painted or landscaped. And we actually shared in some expenses with the other towns and agreed everybody would pay a third, I believe, is the history on that. So I just wanted to bring it back to you because there's some activity, a lot of activity happening, obviously with Westlake and Charles Swab. And there is a lot of activity fixing to happen at the 114 expansion through Roanoke. And of course, we finished our two lanes that go between Westlake and Trophy Club. So there's some activity about trying to do a green ribbon grant along that entire corridor. And so I just wanted to bring it back so you could read it, see if you had problems with it. But pretty vague, so it's like you could get by anything. Yes, Councilmember Johnson?
I don't think there's a point in having the memorandum of understanding. To me, that's, that's basic, that's what cities do. I don't need a document telling me to do that. He doesn't need a document telling me to do that. It's, to me, it's a waste of, waste of time and paper.
Yes, curious on the one, two, three, fourth, whereas, it says, and it's for local government members, is that just a typo?
I suspect it is unless they're looking at the fact that the three together created an entity. But, but that to me was a confusing factor, too, but I don't know if it was an error because I wasn't here when they did that.
Can we use that gymnasium? Section two. Classroom, gymnasiums, recreation centers.
This, this was spearheaded by Westlake was the person who spearheaded it. And it really was to deal with the beautification aspect of what could be done with the 170 bridge. And trail underneath there to continue, to connect the trail systems between Trophy Club Trails and Westlake Trails.
But I think that at the time, they commissioned a group. And they had renderings and everything about what they wanted to do. And I don't think any of that was ever accomplished. I, I don't think the painting of all that area was because of this document. It was just, Tech Dot was about to paint and they approached the towns, or the towns approached them about creating what they termed at the time, the metroport corridor. And, and they had all of that painted and Roanoke was able to throw in the Lower Street Bridge and Westlake was able to throw in some other things, but it had nothing to do with this document. I think that majority, and they had one meeting that I remember and it got real contentious real fast because of Trophy Club Park, the naming of that. And so I, I guess I sort of agree with Eric. I don't, nothing's really been accomplished with this document. So I don't know whether it's worth to continue pursuing, in my opinion.
Well, it exists just because it's there at this point, right?
Yeah, I think written agreements and contracts and things of that nature provide benefit for parties to nail down specifics. In terms of, we're entering into an agreement, I'm party one, you're party two, party three, whatever, and this is my responsibility, your responsibility, and it's highly enumerated and very detailed. And this is more just generic, doesn't really apply to any specific scenarios. And so I, I, I honestly, I don't even, I wouldn't even really be comfortable acting under this agreement in any way. I would rather, if there's something that comes up that we need to cooperate with another municipality or entity on, I would prefer that we have a specific agreement under which to do so that has all of the, all of the details nailed down already in writing and ready to roll. And, and so for me, this is just kind of, this is, yeah, I, I just don't think it's necessary. I would prefer if it's, if it's still considered active, I would, I would advocate canceling our participation in it just for simplicity's sake. That way the other, other entities understand that if there's something that comes up that we need to cooperate on, we should enter into a formal agreement specific to that project.
All right, Eric, you had your hand up.
Since Mayor added this to the agenda, what was your purpose? Did somebody bring this to your attention, did another, did one of the two cities, or is this just something you found and wanted us to talk about?
It was discussed at a metro city's partnership meeting by Tom Breimer, who brought it up. And because none of us were really involved in it, it was like, well, let's allow discussion. So the only way to get it here is to put it on the agenda and have discussion. So that, that's its purpose.
I make a motion to notify the towns of Roanoke and Westlake that Trophy Club does not wish to proceed with the memorandum of understanding as written.
I'll second.
Do we have to go that far? Do we really need to notify them that?
It's just a courtesy.
Since Tom Breimer asked, I would.
Okay.
Well, I was trying to go to it to see, did it have a cancellation clause at the end of it or anything?
Doesn't look like it does, no.
It just continues?
It just kind of lays, it's kind of, um.
So it has no really, it has no real legal binding. It's just stating some facts. So I don't know that you necessarily have to cancel it, but.
Do we just?
Ignore it and go on?
Just ignore it, I don't think you have to take any further action.
I could withdraw my motion. Because I'd, I'd rather not make a statement like that to another town, so.
I'm not sure your agenda to.
We're not agenda to take action on it?
To take, to terminate.
Okay.
And I don't know that you need, you're kind of.
I'll withdraw my motion.
It's like you're terminating a wish list.
Well, it does say consider to take appropriate action regarding the MOU.
So we could have taken action.
So it's pretty generic. My only, my only reason for supporting Eric's motion is that this thing is out there. No one really is a hundred percent sure why it's out there. I think it's a courtesy to the other parties to say, we recognize that we don't know or care why it's out there and it's irrelevant to us. And, and if there's something that, that we need to work on, it, it should be introduced, you know, it should be introduced fresh and, and as a specific project or specific initiative.
So Tom meets with the city managers of both of those cities on a regular basis, he can bring it up as a topic?
I'd bring it up there rather than taking a formal action.
And deal with it appropriately.
I agree.
Okay. All right.
Does a second agree?
Yes.
You what?
He was checking to make sure I agreed with the withdrawal of the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, item sixteen, discussion of items for future agenda, including agenda items for consideration on July eleventh, council agenda, and items on town council future agenda items list. So those are pages one sixteen, one seventeen, and one eighteen. There's been a change, you'll notice, that items that have been placed on this next agenda have notations about which department is placing them there. So I think that's great to have a placeholder for things that are coming forward for us. So I like that change. And the only thing was a reminder that I said that we need to take action on the eleventh to deal with appointment of a council member to the entryway monumentation median committee. All right, anybody have anything for the next July eleventh meeting? Hearing none, how about on our future agenda list?
I, I do have some.
Three is, uh, basically moving forward. Right? And, um, four, uh, would just be removed.
Yeah.
What would you remove three to? Since we're, staff is working on it?
Well, it just makes it remember that it's coming back. You're going to remember when it comes back?
Yeah. Um, I do have something that I want to place and I don't know if placing it on the subsequent meeting's agenda is appropriate, if we just want to add it to this list. Um, uh, we'll see if I have, uh, support for adding this. But I, I know at least for me, um, now that we have a new Parks and Rec director, there's, there's a lot of little things here and there on, in terms of projects that maybe I thought of and then didn't bring up. And I, I think the council would do well to have a workshop session at some point. And maybe, maybe this month isn't the right time because Tony's just in the job now the last couple of weeks. But at some point, I would like to have an agenda workshop item for council to kind of revisit and rack our brains or what are the, what are the Parks and Recs things that we either brought up and got put in the circular filing cabinet or whatever happened to them over the last X number of years and just to make sure that there's nothing that gets, um, forgotten about. I know I have three or four things probably that I could think of, so, um, if that, there's no objection there, I'd like to see that maybe sometime, uh, in the next two or three meetings.
Would we be better served to have a retreat and, is there other items you want to talk about?
I mean, we used to have a summer retreat. I don't know if we want to necessarily go, go to that route, go that, that depth.
John has a question or comment?
I would suggest doing the sooner than later, uh, later. We're going over the budget right now. Next council meeting, we're presenting, uh, general fund expenditures. Um, that's just a summary one, um, but any projects or anything that you guys want that we're not aware of right now would add to that. So sooner is better than later, so that we can get those in.
Most of my things probably aren't budget items, but for others, that's good to know.
All right, so what, what would you want to try to do, Rollin'?
Um, did we say for sure we were going to have a meeting, a second meeting in July or no? We're doing the mud?
Yes, and we agreed to meet at seven PM, last I heard.
Okay.
We're going to have a regular council meeting, uh, going over budget items.
So.
Joint meeting at eight PM was my.
So is July eleventh too soon to do some, to have that discussion or, or no? Because we shouldn't do it on the twenty-fifth, it sounds like, since.
No, I don't think it's news, uh, too soon, but I would suggest maybe council to provide me, uh, some guidance as to what it is that you want to discuss or what your thoughts are and we can be ready for that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we're not putting it on the eleventh, we're trying to come back to the next meeting.
Or the eleventh will be the next meeting, so.
Okay, so that's when you're going to do it, is on the eleventh?
We could, yeah, if, if you guys are cool with that. Yeah.
Yeah, but you would submit the, uh, your, your issues ahead of time?
Yeah.
Would we want to, uh, consider maybe moving that meeting up by a half hour or so or, I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion?
Me, yeah.
For the workshop part of it?
Depending on, yeah, depending on the, uh, depending on the, uh, agenda and the length of it. I don't have an objection to that.
Anybody have a problem meeting at six thirty? On the eleventh?
My flight's on time.
On the eleventh. Pardon?
My flight's on time.
If you're not delayed, huh?
Well, you're driving it.
Somebody controls the path, though.
Beep beep, out of my way.
All right, uh, so for right now, let's, uh, change the time to six thirty. And, uh, council, if you have some items you want to discuss, please get them to Tom as soon as you can so he can, uh, direct staff appropriately to get ready for that. Uh, John, did you have any specific items, um, that you were thinking about? No?
No, I just didn't want to miss them in supplementals when we're discussing that and general fund supplementals the next meeting. So, um, if you guys send those to him, we'll try to get prices and everything so that those can be considered with, along, along with those and we can discuss them.
Okay. All right, so anything else on item sixteen? Okay, council, if you'll notice, um, item, uh, eight, eighteen is where we could discuss, uh, our recommendation for the Denko nine-one-one. We have already made a recommendation previously, uh, and we don't have anybody else unless you have someone that's on the list that was already nominated. So this is a second step of a two-step process where municipalities make their nominations, you come back and then vote. You need that executive session to decide what your motion would be as to who's, who to cast your vote for.
It has to be executive session?
No. No.
No, did you?
In the order of things, we were going into executive session to discuss that and I don't see a need for that.
No, I'm good.
All right, so we will not go into executive session, ask what on our agenda, and so we will go to item eighteen. Um, consider to take appropriate action regarding the resolution of the, of, uh, the Town Council appointing one member to serve on the Board of Managers for Denko Area nine-one-one District and providing an effective, uh, date. Uh, so our nomination before was Sue Tamel. So anybody want to make a motion to nominate her and cast our vote? You're really casting your vote for that person.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash eleven, appointing, um.
Nominate.
Well, I'm just reading the, uh, staff report, sorry. Nominating one member to serve on the Board of Managers of Denko Area nine-one-one District, Sue Tamel.
Second? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rowe made the motion. Lamont seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it did approve. Uh, we didn't go into executive session, so item nineteen, is it going to happen? I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Second, my own motion.
All in favor, show your hands. It is approved. We are adjourned at eight sixteen.